...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Al.
Here.
Mr. Beistock. Mr. Vance. Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Here. Please remember, if you have a comment, you have to use the podium during citizens' comments. You cannot have any outbursts during our meeting. Citizens' comments.
Kristy Smith, please.
Hi, my name is Kristy Smith. I have three kids in the school district and am involved in PTA. I just wanted to address the board again. We had many conversations today on the phone. I worked at the library today, and that was the talk of the town, the meeting last night. I want to thank you, first of all, for voting to take the first steps to increase taxes. I think it's a really important part of this. I had a couple of questions about when I stated yesterday that increasing it by one mil would cost the average home $16 a year. That was information that I was given by Mr. Marnell and Dr. Molnar in April when we were doing our fundraiser. So, it is, that was at that time, which it might change monthly, I'm not sure, but it was $16 a year for the average home in Westmoreland County. Again, I want to thank you. So many people, including teachers, staff, and parents have contacted me, and they have so many ideas as to how they can cut their own budgets, how they can help in their students' classrooms. I ask that you take more time. Don't vote today. Research this a little bit more. I think that there's so many different ideas out there that you don't even know about. I've had teachers email me ideas. I've had parents. There's just so many small things that could add up to make a huge difference. I also hope that we can proceed tonight, that as we proceed, we can all make our opinions known in a kind and respectful way. And I thank you all for the work you've put into this.
Laura Guyer.
Good evening. My name is Laura Guyer, and yes, I am an employee of Southmoreland School District. But tonight, I am speaking as a citizen of Southmoreland School District in East Huntington Township. I have lived in this area since 1982, when I married my husband, who was a Southmoreland graduate. When we got married, we needed to make a decision on whose hometown we were going to live in and raise our children. We, at that time, decided on Southmoreland and East Huntington area. Our youngest son graduated in 2003, and in 2007, he married another 2003 graduate. They have since blessed us with two granddaughters, and we were so very happy when they decided to move back to Southmoreland School District before their children started school because they wanted their children to attend Southmoreland because of their reputation. In addition to our granddaughters, we also have great-grandchildren who attend Southmoreland because their parents also made the decision, being Southmoreland graduates, that they wanted their children to attend Southmoreland too because of the reputation. I'm not happy to say this, even though it is true that I have reached the category known as senior citizen at the age of 62. My husband, who is retired and living on a fixed income, is in that category also at the age of 70. I think it is important to let you, the board members, know that not all of the senior citizens in this school district share the feelings of the senior citizens that spoke here last night. Some of you take pride, even though it's not something to be proud of, in saying over and over that you have not raised taxes. In the past 10 years, having the taxes raised only four times does not make sense. Raising taxes, at least part of the state allowed amount, that's allowed under Act One, would have helped us at least keep up with the cost of living and inflation. And as mentioned by one person last night, we are all living on a fixed income. It is not only a senior citizen thing. I was so upset and very disappointed last night that two of you, after listening to two and a half hours of community people speaking about our budget in our district, still had the nerve to vote no on a tax increase. That is just deplorable. And, on a little side note, if we ever do have the extra money, I advise you guys to get better microphones up there because it is very hard to hear you sitting out here. Thank you very much.
Kathryn Feike.
I have asked 10 people to identify the number-one problem in our high school, and every one of them said discipline or the lack of it. It's a sad day that common sense at Southmoreland has ceased to exist. Most people would have, once upon a time, agreed that teachers should be role models for our children. Well, now, we have a formally instituted Dress Down Friday. Apparently, this is based on the belief that on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, our teachers actually dress up to come to school. That certainly hasn't been my direct observation. So, on Fridays, our staff will now dress down from their usual attire. So, if a teacher shows up with ripped blue jeans, a T-shirt, a tank top, flip-flops, sneakers, jean shorts, or cutoff jeans, this is what our board wants our school to look like. This is what we want our students to have as role models. Do you think for one minute that photos won't be snapped on phones, and these will show up on social media, in yearbooks, et cetera? This is the image that Southmoreland School Board wants? You are selling out a deterioration of professional appearance and demeanor for less than 50 cents an hour. How about instead, we initiate Dress Up Fridays? Then we can show our children how professionals, true professionals, dress and act. This is a sad day. We all know the infamous quote by Nancy Pelosi. "We passed the bill; now we can find out what was in it." Was she talking about the Southmoreland School District budget? A lady came up last night to this microphone, and she asked exactly what cuts were being made. The answer was, she was told she could see it today, about seven hours before the budget was passed. I have another concern. For the last several meetings, if and when board members show up, I've observed that there are about three or four of them whose voices I have never heard. They have nothing to say. I was under the impression that they were elected to speak for their constituents. How sad that three to four of them are mutes. Apparently, their silence speaks for itself. I watched your website presentation. It was repetitive gobblegook, or maybe, "I'm just so stupid, I don't know what's happening." I am closing with a specific request. Please tell me, number one, the exact total amount of all legal, folks, legal budget cuts. I want a total. Number two, I want to know exactly what, if any, is the budget deficit versus total income as compared to total expenses or output. Number three, based on this figure, what is the exact unassigned fund balance? Not 2017, 2018, 19, 1819. And I want to know exactly how many people lost their jobs who are not coaches and not who retired. Retired people didn't lose their jobs. I'm going to wait for your answer. I think I still have another minute or two. No answer? You do not owe the people of this school district an answer to those questions, am I right? I'm waiting.
The school board is not obligated to stop the meeting and answer individual questions of speakers. They can handle that as part of their budget discussions and presentation by the different people presenting that information, but there's no obligation under the Sunshine Law to stop the meeting and answer specific questions.
I saw in the list, Mr. Petonik, where they're cutting $5,000 from legal expenses.
Michelle Williams.
Good evening. My goal tonight was to just sit in my seat and kind of be quiet and just see what happens because I think everything has pretty much been said. First of all, I've been coming to the meetings just two times now. I used to attend Hemphill School Board meetings religiously. So, it's a little bit different for me compared to Hemphill. But, we've talked about some pretty important things. We listened to our children last night say how important the computer science program was, and my child's education is extremely important to me. I am appalled that anybody would use their time at this microphone to discuss Dress Down Fridays. Sorry, but that's kind of just out there. I'm not, I don't mean to be disrespectful to Mrs. Feike, however, there, excuse me, Dr. Feike, sorry. And this is what I mean. This is a very important meeting. This is very important for our children. If you just want to come here to be disrespectful to whoever you want to be disrespectful to, find somewhere else to go.
The speaker should be directing their comments to the side.
Okay. I will direct my comments to you. Okay, I'm sorry. So, I think that we need to all be willing to come together to find ways that we are going to generate revenue for this school district. Because honestly, we were put on notice last night that if, what cuts aren't made this time, will probably be made next time, regardless of a tax increase. So, we need to look at that concession stand and see, will the boosters run it? Can we bring in an outside entity to run it that would maybe be making a profit for themselves, as well as making a profit for the school district? Per capita taxes, a pay-to-play fee, looking at grants from the private sector, as well as the public sector. And I, I just feel like the cuts were listed on the website. We, to say that nobody knows what those cuts were until seven hours before, the original cut list was listed, the second cut list was listed, and I think things that were brought up last night were listed today. So, I hope that from this point forward, all of the people that are sitting in this room today will continue to come together for these meetings to, A, support the board, and B, hold the board accountable. We all need to be accountable. This is our children's future, and I'm willing, and I'm telling you now, of all the people sitting in this room, a special-needs parent is the last person who has any time to be anywhere other than work or home. But, my child's education is the most important thing to me, and I will be here, and I will put in the hard work, whether that's helping to write grants or whatever it is doing. I will be here to fight the fight for my child. That's why I'm here. If you just want to come here and yell, stay home.
Sharon Barkley.
Hi, my name's Sharon Barkley, and I'm back again because I like to get my answers tonight. I figured I gave you guys enough time. I have a question for the board. We have a $32 million budget. How many of you have any type of education in working with that type of budget? I'd just like to see of hands, how many of you really are qualified to do it, why you never went out and got the help that we needed before you let it get into this situation? Are any of you qualified for that? That's all I'm asking. And then I'm going to switch because she said about raising money will do anything, right? Okay, teachers, the children are the most important things in your lives. How many are you willing to actually take a pay cut? My husband lost his job at Volkswagen, Sony. Okay, Volkswagen, Sony, AnchorHawking. We lost five places, Lennox. We've all lost, our husbands lost jobs. What did Southmoreland teachers do? They all got raises. I think it's time now, they step up to the bat. That's all. Let them step up to the bat and help.
Candace Raymond.
Good evening. My name is Candace Raymond. I have two children in the Southmoreland School District. I was here last night, but I had a few other things I wanted to share this evening. I wanted to share a quick story about the discussion I had with my nine-year-old daughter about all of this that's going on. She's pretty smart for nine, and she understands a lot, so I thought I should tell her what was happening. She loves AR. It's like her favorite thing in the world. She's already got a list of books and points, and she's ready to go. And I told her that there's a fairly good chance that there wasn't going to be AR next year. I told her there were some really big cuts that were proposed to be made, and that because some of those things were more important, there was a pretty good chance AR wouldn't be saved. She was pretty disappointed to hear that, and when I told her that some of the things that could be cut were middle school computer and foreign language, which don't even affect her yet, her first response was, "Oh, no, I can't wait to learn more Spanish." So, this doesn't affect just the immediate kids, it affects future kids as well. I told her that some of the custodians might be losing their jobs. She got all upset, and she went, "What about the lunch ladies? They're so nice to us. I don't want my kid to have to worry about the people she depends on not being here." I told her there was a chance that they may cut a librarian. The last thing my daughter said to me before I left was, "Mom, you have to go, and you have to convince them to keep Mrs. Pritz. I love the library." I tell you these things because these people and these programs, they matter to our kids. The current numbers, they aren't just numbers and dollar signs. They're people who affect our children. Our kids spend the majority of their time at school, and everyone from the principal down to the custodian makes an impact on their day. I have to say, to even remotely suggest that our teachers even consider a pay cut is the most ludicrous thing I've ever heard. Our teachers are some of the lowest-paid teachers in the county, and they work harder than anyone I know. They give of their own free time, they give of their own free resources, they are there for our kids all the time, and to expect them to do with less is crazy, especially less pay. They're already one of the lowest-paid teachers in the county. I did want to publicly acknowledge something that I missed last night, and that I do acknowledge how important the role of the custodians are at our schools. When I was a kid, our custodian, Max, was one of my favorite people at the elementary school, and to this day, almost 35, 40 years later, I still remember him. That being said, obviously, we need solutions to the problems that we have. One of the things that I had hoped to find out tonight is a little bit of clarification to Mrs. Love's plan, just in terms of my understanding of it. It seemed like what was being proposed, that there were some things that could not be increased from the current budget that would save money. I just wanted some clarification on that when you guys get to that because if that's true, I believe that plan, combined with some of the other proposals, maybe can get us to a really great place. The second thing I wanted to address was the new assistant principals that were discussed last night. I know people had asked about if we have to actually go through with hiring them. I myself am an attorney, so, just for fun today, I kind of did a little of my own brief research, and obviously, I don't have all of the information or details. And I realized that, basically, it wouldn't be impossible to rescind offers, but it certainly does expose the district to possible liability if those applicants were to bring legal action. And obviously, you people are the only ones that know the details there. But what I was curious about, and what I couldn't find information about today, I just didn't have the time, was if there was any possibility in renegotiating the terms of their positions, a possible reduction of the salaries that have been offered. Even a modest reduction in their salaries could possibly save some custodian jobs. I just think there's still a lot of things that can be considered. Like Kristy Smith said, I believe there are so many more options that should be explored. And I know you're up against this June 30th deadline, and I don't know the repercussions of what happens if you don't hit June 30th, but it just seems like there's so much going on, and I don't want it to ever feel like it was a hurry up and let's just do this because we don't have any other choice. One of the things that I did want to address that isn't directly related to the budget, but I feel like a lot of us have had trouble finding information about what was going on. I feel like the website, unless you know very, very specifically where to look, it's hard to find the information. Most of us got the info from the PTA's Facebook page. But the district has a Facebook page, and they haven't really used it, except for today, to discuss any of what was going on. I have seen YouTube videos posted there of the meetings, but most of us don't have two hours to watch the meetings, even if there were just some bullet points on, okay, at tonight's school board meeting, we're going to be discussing A, B, C, and D that might help people be a little bit more involved. I'm just hoping that you guys are willing to consider a tax increase. I think it's in the best interest, along with cuts, I think combining all of those things together are completely workable. As a taxpayer, I paid taxes before my kids were in the district, I'll pay them after my kids are in the district, and I am more than willing to pay what needs to be paid to make sure our kids get a quality education. Thank you.
Sonia Zarobsky.
Hi, I'm Sonia Zarobsky. I am a parent of an eighth-grade student here at the middle school, and I just want to quickly touch on a few things before I state why I am here. My child loves to read, and the main reason she loves to read is because of library with Ms. Henry and Mrs. Pritz. Mrs. Pritz covered everything, all the important reasons why we need to keep a library, but her main reason for reading, if you ask her, is because Ms. Henry and Mrs. Pritz made it exciting for her. Taught her how to love books, and how to use her imagination and be in the book. Also, I just wanted to say about the students who spoke on Mrs. Lehman last night's computer science. They have expressed exactly how my daughter feels about the class, how exciting it was to do, and upsetting it was to do Shark Tank, how stressful it was. They learned how to do presentations, they learned how to publicly speak, obviously better than me. But, I am also, not only am I a parent here, I am also a part-time employee here. I am a sub-aide and secretary, and for the first few years here, I was a sub-aide. I just want to tell you that I did six months at Mount Pleasant with one of our students. And these aides that we have in our school district are amazing. They, they're extremely extra-special people. They have a special bond with their children. Most of them have had their kids from the time they've come here. They, each aide knows each other's child, they can work with them. To take these ladies away from these children is just, it's, it's just wrong. You know, just even the learning support kids, it's frustrating alone when you don't understand, and then when you have somebody that comes in that has no idea, knows nothing about you, that's trying to help you, it's just even frustrating more. And it's also frustrating for an aide to come in, and they don't know what to do. I just want to say that your aides here are amazing, and to take them away from the school district and away from the students is just tragic. But, but for the last couple of years, I have been a sub-secretary. And before I worked here, I just want to tell you that I thought that these school employees were overpaid and did nothing but answer the phone, taught our kids, did nothing. After working with the students, I have a new appreciation, or working in the school district, I have a new appreciation for the principals, for the teachers, the aides, the custodians, the secretaries, and the counselors. Or, I wonder how they do handle everything, all the work that is mandated by state and required for them to do on a daily basis, so shorthanded and extremely underpaid. It is easy for a parent or the board just to say, "They don't need this, or they don't need that." The past few years, as a sub-secretary at all four schools, and I can tell you that all four schools ran differently. The secretaries of these schools run the schools. Sure, administration makes the decisions, but the eight secretaries and one guidance counselor make the schools run smoothly. These nine ladies are the ones that deal with the students, the parents, the teachers. They keep track of where your child is all day. It is impossible for me to say everything they are responsible for, but to name a few. They prepare budgets, they do purchases for the entire school, they do the student schedules, they do PIMS, they do report cards, they write checks. They are the ones that take every call that comes into the school district. They greet every visitor that comes into the school. They deal with irritated parents and students. They do attendance, they file, they file charges against students that need charges against them. They make sure the lesson plans are there, they make sure all classrooms are covered. I can go on and on on what these secretaries do at this school. And not to mention, they are also the principal and guidance secretaries. We also have one special education secretary who keeps track of 370 students, 19 aides and about 20 teachers. And, to cut it short, that to take away a secretary and to expect one secretary to run a school district, or to run their school, is insane. It's impossible. We've had Dr. Molnar, Mr. Masha, Mr. Krafchak, Mr. Clara, Mrs. Kuhar. They have all had to help the secretaries. They've all been there when it's been crazy. And to take away a secretary, or to take their subs away, is just, it's just insane. Like, we are the lowest, me, is the lowest-paid employee in the school district. So, to take me away to help make their days easier is just insane. Okay, thank you.
Sherri Fowler.
Hi, board. I am an employee at Southmoreland Primary Center. I am talking to you today, I'm not a very good public speaker, but I am talking to you today because I petitioned you to keep the position at Southmoreland Primary Center, today because I petitioned you to keep the position at South Moreland Primary Center, the secretaries, because it is a well-needed position. About ten years ago, I petitioned the board and had documentation to show that the hours that I spent extra working were twenty-plus hours a week and in some cases, more. I enlisted the aide of my mother, who was a retired teacher and is now ninety-one and can no longer help. I have also enlisted, over the years, my children. My husband has also stepped in when something needed fixed or something like that and it just, there was too many things ahead. I want to tell you that ten years ago, when Kelly Vance was hired, it meant that I could have a life outside of South Moreland. Yes, I like my job, but I have a family and after all, I do believe family comes first. Kelly is needed. As a matter of fact, all buildings should have a senior secretary and a younger higher because this way, the district is always prepared for the future. If you do not do that, when it does become time for me to retire, you are going to be left with a building that has, it doesn't have all the details that it needs to take care of because it's all up here. There is no writing down, I've tried. You can't write down all the things because it is perpetually changing. For the other people, our teachers at all the buildings work extremely hard. At one point in time, some of the secretaries went back to school to be teachers. I should have done that, but I didn't and I don't think I could have handled that job. It is so intense nowadays with regards to the testing that goes on, how they have to teach the children and how many diverse children are in each classroom. If you get the classroom sizes larger and larger, our high-quality education for all will not exist. The teachers can't do everything and when you keep eliminating employees such as the custodians, how are you going to keep these buildings clean? It's hard on a day-to-day basis as it is. I don't know if you're aware, but it is difficult. Things are not the same anymore. Your children and your family dynamic is not the same. You have families that are, so to say, broken and it is very hard for a teacher to fix it all. It is very hard for custodians to keep the classroom clean. Our paraprofessionals, I talked to them one day and I talked to them many days, but I could not do the job that they do. They are with those children from the beginning of the day to the end. They help them through their school day, they assist them through lunch, many times they're assisting them through the bathroom and maybe changing them several times out of the day. I hope you consider keeping our staff the way it is.
I just put a document on the website for you that we received from the State Tax Equalization Board, talking about the assessed values, two thousand seventeen market values, both in Fayette and Westmoreland County. Fayette was at ninety-five million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and Westmoreland, six hundred and ninety-two million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars for a total assessed market value in our district of seven hundred and eighty-eight million, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars. That was just an informational piece and that is where Mr. Marnell Britton derives the figures for his local revenues.
Solicitor information?
I'm going to deal with some of the legal aspects of some of the issues that members of the public have been raising, just to try to clear the air. The school board under the school code is legally obligated to pass a budget and also pass the taxes, whether it would be an increase or the same, and the millages related there too, by June 30th of the year. So I'm sorry, June 30th is the deadline to pass the school district budget. Now, it is literally true that in years in which the General Assembly does not pass the basic education subsidy by June 15th, that theoretically speaking, you can have fifteen days after that, but it's not a real true fifteen days in the sense that you still have to give ten days' notice in advance of the meeting, which starts limiting your options about when you're going to schedule a meeting. But the additional problems that that raises deal with potential legal issues with the priority of the lien of taxes and a very difficult area which creates a problem for paying employees and actually having employees continue to work after July 1st. Those items which have already been earned and are being paid during the summer out of last year's budget are not the issue, but rather the incurring of new expenses and paying them when you have not passed the budget. And we went through a very difficult and the brunt of it tends to be borne by the members of the custodial union, which is sort of asking them to bear the brunt of the risk of trying to move past June 30th. Insofar as per capita taxes, schools in Pennsylvania are highly regulated and back whenever, many years ago, the school board approved eliminating the per capita tax. And then with the enactment of Special Session Act One way back in June of two thousand and six, which set up all the additional restrictions on school districts in exchange for obtaining gambling money to be utilized to lower school district taxes for those who had farmstead or home type exemptions. But in return, it made it very difficult for school districts to raise taxes. And in Section 333 of that statute, it states that except to set forth in subsection J, unless there is compliance with subsection C, Board of School Directors may not do any of the following. Number one, increase the rate of tax levied for the support of the schools by more than the index. Number two, levy a tax for the support of the public schools which was not levied in the two thousand five, two thousand six fiscal year. Mr. Marnell and I were researching this back in April and came to the conclusion that that was eliminated several years before two thousand six. So assuming, which I haven't really researched to exhaustion at this point, that you can even do it with a referendum, the time for seeking a referendum is way past the time to do that because that has to be done very early in the year as part of your preliminary So capita taxes for this coming fiscal year of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen cannot be legally enacted. I was asked last night and although not, well, let me cover one more thing. Yesterday, there was some bad information disseminated to the school board members and perhaps the members of the audience and I don't mean to be hypercritical of a layperson, but the copy of the Senate bill which was handed out is not the bill which was enacted and made law by the legislature. And I sent an email to all the school board members today saying that I was doubling, checking on that and it was House Bill 1448, which enacted the omnibus school code amendments for this year. And in them, there is a very special definition relating to this issue about third-party services. Now, the fact that I'm commenting on this does not necessarily mean that I am advocating specifically for or against the particular initial mention of this, the initial proposal which the superintendent was directed to do to go and find cuts in the school district which would be legal. And the provisions of this new Section 528 for all the steps that you have to jump through in order to be able to subcontract out apply to what's called non-instructional services. And non-instructional services shall mean services provided by a school employee whose terms and conditions of employment are governed by a collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the school employer and the exclusive representative of the employee. So literally, the statute does not apply to the situation of the aides and paraprofessionals. The school board does have the legal authority to move forward with that kind of a plan. I'm not telling them that they have to do it, I'm just saying that the information that was presented was incorrect. The school board continues to have that legal authority. Finally, I did not have time to generate this in writing, but I did do research, legal research concerning the situation with the recent hiring of two assistant principals and that was done at a public meeting that was advertised and the vote was taken and recorded. And I had asked last night if that information was communicated to the prospective assistant, new employees, assistant principals, and was informed that it was. I realize that this is an unusual situation, but principals and assistant principals are still considered, quote, "professional employees" under the school code and the school code highly regulates dealing with professional employees. And they are being hired to be principals or assistant principals, not to perform some other kind of, you know, special project that would not relate to the normal kinds of things that assistant principals are supposed to do. So it was, they were validly hired and communicated to them. In my legal opinion, the school board cannot unilaterally now attempt to undo that and rescind it without incurring legal liability. They could ask, inquire as to whether or not those applicants do want to move forward, but the right to prevent that from moving forward, that horse is now out of the barn. And so assuming that they would intend to move forward, I don't believe that the school district can unilaterally obstruct that. To do so would to invite a lawsuit that, if won, which I believe it has a more than reasonable chance of success, a lawsuit for reinstatement and for back pay. Another area that sometimes occurs is detrimental reliance in which if an employee has changed their position, like giving notice to their employer and no longer having a job or incurring certain kinds of expenses, that's a different kind of legal theory, but an additional area of concern. The school code lists in Sections 1122 clauses for termination of the contract. Obviously, they haven't done anything to give cause to terminate the contract nor the other provision that's unusual in the school code is the ability to do what are called demotions. However, whenever you would be attempting to use that section and hold a hearing and say that you want to demote them before they've even entered upon their duties and the situation is very narrow in time from last week to this week, I believe that it would be successfully challenged as being arbitrary and capricious to attempt to do that. So the legal methods under the school code to terminate it without the consent of the new hires, I believe, cannot be met. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Education, Jersey Shore Area School District, 392 Atlantic Second, thirteen thirty-one, is a case decided by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which I think would be bearing heavily on this case and unfavorably so. So I did give the school board members copies of the bill that I mentioned. We've talked about that and also calling the fact that I have also provided advice to the school board about the situation and don't have anything further to say unless the school board members have questions which they would want me to deal with. Thank you.
Any business?
Curtailment of program. Mr. Potonic has drafted some language here which I will read aloud.
The beginning of the part is the report by the superintendent.
Yes.
Which you authored, correct?
Well, yeah, you gave me a framework and I authored, that's correct. Record of the superintendent, the introduction. Superintendent John A. Molnar is hereby report and make recommendations of curtailment or alteration of the educational program of the South Moreland School District and makes recommendations to the school board listing the specific educational programs eligible to be reduced or eliminated and the reasons justifying such, including any of the following which apply as to each program in order: to conform with standards of organization or educational activities required by law or educational activities required by law or recommended by the Department of Education, including specifically if the course is not a required course as follows. Report of the Superintendent on Programs. It is recommended that the Board eliminate the foreign language program at the middle school. French and Spanish are not required courses at the middle school level. Elimination of these courses will provide additional science lab seat hours. Elimination of this program will result in the elimination of foreign language teaching positions at the following grade levels. Grade eight Spanish specifically, and other Spanish teaching positions in grades nine through 12 that will be covered by existing foreign language teachers. Grade eight French specifically, and other French teaching positions in grades nine through 12 that are to be covered by existing foreign language teachers." So, that is the report. "Resolution for Curtailment or Alteration of the Educational Program of the Southmoreland School District. Whereas the Superintendent has given a report to the Southmoreland School Board pursuant to School Code Section 1124 stated above recommending programs for curtailment or alteration as a result of conforming with standards of organization or educational activities required by law or recommended by the Department of Education, including specifically if the course is not a required course, which will result in the elimination or reduction of certain programs. And the Board of School Directors concurs with his findings in the report, which are to be part of the public record, and are incorporated into this resolution, which concurrence is more specifically stated below. And whereas the curtailment of these programs will result in the suspension of the necessary number of professional employees pursuant to Section 1124(a)(2) of the Public School Code of 1949, as amended by Act Number 55 of 2017, Act of November 6, 2017, Public Law 1142, Number 55. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Director hereby incorporates the above preambles as part of this resolution, and accepts the report of the Superintendent, and concurs with the findings for causes for suspension under Section 1142(a)(2) of the above cited statute, in order to conform with the standards of organization or educational activities required by law or recommended by the Department of Education, as stated above, as to those curtailments or alterations in Section 2 below for items as follows: elimination of the French and Spanish programs at Southmoreland Middle School. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes the suspension of the necessary number of professional employees as a result of their curtailment or alteration of the educational program of the Southmoreland School District as to the following programs and numbers of professional employees. Programs: eliminate the foreign language program at the middle school resulting in the elimination of two foreign language teaching positions at the following grade levels. Grade eight Spanish specifically, and other Spanish teaching positions in grades nine through 12 that will be covered by existing foreign language teachers. Grade eight French specifically, and other French teaching positions in grade nine through 12 that will be covered by existing foreign language teachers. The Superintendent is authorized and directed to post notifications of all curtailments on the Internet website, notify the Department of Education of the actions taken pursuant to School Code 1142(a)(2), and the Superintendent shall realign the total professional staff, and present the list of professional employees to be suspended to the school board for final approval at the public meeting on July 12, 2018, upon which final vote this resolution will become effective, and if to, and if to the extent approved by public vote thereafter. Give a notice in writing by certified mail and email of intent to suspend, including a right to request a local agency hearing to the necessary number of professional employees who are to be suspended, and to other employees as potentially interested parties who are not being suspended because of bumping or more senior employees into the positions of less senior employees if the employee to be suspended claims an improper order of suspension, and give notice of reassignment to employees affected by the realignment according to seniority as required by email and ordinary mail." So, we would entertain a motion for this resolution, please.
Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mr. Beistall, discussion?
The legal situation is that the school board would have to approve this in order to then eliminate those positions in the budget.
Roll call.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistall. Mr. Carson.
I still have a topic to call in here.
It's up to you.
Not supposed to do it during the vote. It's up to the President. You're supposed to have the debate before the vote starts. But you can, and you can't a motion to suspend the rules, if you so prefer. Okay. Then you have to vote. Just that. Mr. Carson, your vote. Your vote. We're voting. We're voting.
Mr. Fry. Mr. Polkowski. Mrs. Rhodes. Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Love. Motion carries. Seven, one no, one absent.
2018-2019 final budget.
Be resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District adopt the 2018-19 final budget. That the Board adopt the final budget with expenditures of $30,565,385, revenues of $30,200,14, and the used fund balance the amount of $365,371. This sets the millage at 77.78 mills for Westmoreland County, and 14.4586 mills for Fayette County.
Can you somehow incorporate into that the list of cuts that are being made?
Once there's a motion and a second, I was going to read those, yes.
Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mr. Fry.
Pursuant to Mr. Potonic's request, I will go through the list of specific cuts, but by way of synopsis, this includes everything that was presented at the June 21 meeting, but retains paraprofessionals as district employees with current benefits, reinstates the middle school computer science program, reinstates the secretarial position at Southmoreland Primary Center, reinstates the elementary librarian, reinstates cross-country tennis and golf, reduces the overall athletic budget by $7,500 to be made up by fundraising, and instates a pay-to-play at $50 per person. It also adds back seven hours of custodial time. And just to go through what those cuts were.
If they exist in a written document that has been made available, you can refer to the.
They do exist, they do exist in a written document, and that attachment is on Board Docs under Administrative Cuts, June 18, 2018, and I do believe it is on Sheet 4 of the spreadsheet.
Discussion?
We all agree with the $50 for the pay-to-play. You think that's enough, or you think it should be more? Think that's enough?
The only thing I've got to say about that, if you started 100, now you have two or three kids playing. Is there any option or anything else about second child, third child, or is it all $100 a piece?
That would be, not the discretion of what we're directed to do by this body. That would be at your discretion, whatever we are directed to do.
I think, should we solve this now?
Yes.
We have to solve it now, not wait till late. This is why we're here.
Charlie, what, what did you, what was your, you had talked to us about this before. What was your general thoughts on the, how much?
Charlie, could you come to the mic, please?
Like I said, when I looked into this before, with some of the schools where we were first checked, was a lot of the bigger schools, more affluent schools were charging 100, and like Mr. Alt said, every other sport was like maybe $50. I went to Dairy, they just implemented this pay-to-play. They're charging $75 for high school sports one time for all activities, and middle school was 50. I feel, in our sense, you know, $50, was that what I heard you guys were thinking about? 50 or 100?
Yes, to both. That's the debate.
Yeah, I think a $50 fee to start off, I mean, is something I guess you could look and always raise. My fear is we have, you know, I've listened to a lot of people talk about finances and different things. I know where the situation is, and I understand that, but if we cause, you know, some kids may not have the opportunity because we're not going to be able to raise that kind of money at $100 to play a sport. $50 and $25, I thought was pretty fair, because our middle school sports, most of them only play 10, 12 games. They play a much shorter season. High school obviously goes longer, and there's a lot more activities involved in a high school varsity sport. But I think a $50, $25, and the way we got to collect it, there's where you got to think about the, we talked about the free and reduce lunch, a lot of schools implement that. If you have that, you don't pay. The way you collect it, you know, whether it turns into the athletic office, it goes to the coach, it goes to the offices. I think we could, if you vote on what the fee is, we kind of write up a policy, or get, I'll present something with the help of the principals that you guys could vote on in June. You know, maybe that way, instead of rushing it in tonight to make sure that we have, whether we have families that have so many children, this is what the rate's going to be. And a lot of them, if they have three or more children, they have a one set fee. Say if you set $50, that 150 would be the most they would pay. Any more children would be covered. But it's obviously whatever we feel, or you guys feel would be best. I think, I'm going to say honestly, I was always against pay-to-play, because I think a lot of kids, it turns them away. It turns away that one kid that says, "I'm just going to go out for the team, even if I'm not going to make it," where now, I'm, if I'm not going to play, or I don't have a chance to play, instead of being part of the team, I mean, I get that opportunity. So, but obviously, with the situation we're in, I get what we need to do.
The only thing I've got to say, I like to pay-to-play. The, if there's one student in the household, there wants a place for it, just the obvious. If there's two, the second one's 25. There's three, the third one's 25. That way, everybody's being a little bit of a cut, but still, to me, and then if we run into trouble, maybe the Parents Association can come up and help a kid that cannot raise the money. You know, just like the band, I'll take the example of the band. They had to raise so much money per band member to go to Florida. And if they didn't, people helped them out. And that's my opinion, but I only have one.
Tonight, or?
Hmm?
Tonight? You only have one opinion tonight? I said, you only have one opinion tonight?
Well, who knows? I ain't done yet.
50 for first and 25 for second? Jason?
Yes.
Question? So, do we need a motion for?
We already have a motion and a second on the floor for the budget.
Okay.
In there, it presupposes what number? What is the budget number?
Presuppose for pay-to-play?
Yeah.
$50?
Per person?
Yes. That was an estimate, you know, based on.
Okay, but to reduce that would require a motion for a division of the question.
All right, you, you got it from there, sir. Go ahead.
Well, somebody has to make it.
We don't understand what you're asking.
Okay, you have a main motion on the floor. It is now, it is $50 per person. If, so if there are multiple children in the families, it would be $50 per child. If there is a desire by the Board to present a different plan for that, someone has to make a motion for a division of the question as to the amount to charge for pay-to-play, and specify what it is. And that requires a second, and then you're going to vote on that first, and then come back to the budget. Unless somebody else wants to divide some other question.
I'd like to know what's covered under that pay-to-play. Is that just sports?
Athletics and marching band is what we had. The extracurricular, right.
All right, don't make that question now. Divide the question.
Divide the question. And that we go with the $50 for the, is that what we're voting on? $50 for the first child, 25 for each additional child, then?
In a family.
In a family. In a family, okay.
And just to clarify, $50 is a one-time activity fee, no matter how many activities one child might be involved in, correct? Okay.
Second, second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Discussion, Charlie. Real quick, what did we learn by the pay-to-play? Like, what, what is it potentially going to bring us into $50 a kid?
About $18,000.
Yeah. Yeah. If we charge every, last year, we had 350 kids participate in sports, from middle school to the high school. That's random, that's not double sports, it's just one sport if they play. And if we charged $50 for everybody, including, it would be about $18,000. If you took, like we said, the free and reduce, that would cut it in about half. I think we had 210 people, or kids that were paid, and that would take it down to about 8, 9,000.
So, 8, 9,000, 8, 9,000 dollars coming into the district. Do we get reimbursed for the free and reduced kids?
But we could fundraise for the free and reduced. I don't.
No, I think every child should pay the same amount.
Yeah, I think so, too.
If they pay the same, they're exempt if they're free or reduced.
No reduction.
I thought, I thought it was like state law, if they're free or reduced, they're exempt.
No.
This is extracurricular activity.
I understood, I thought it was the same umbrella.
Other discussion?
Now, one question before you. Does that include the band? I want to clear this up right now.
Yes.
Because you're talking sports, and clear this up right now, that is a band included, right?
Right.
Does that include concert band, which is a class, anymore than would, that would include phys ed class, but it does include marching band, which is an extracurricular? Pardon me?
Under Title IX, marching band is not considered a sport.
That's correct, it's an activity. We agree.
Am I correct that you also included other extracurricular activities? So, they would probably be of an academic nature.
Right. Right now, it's band and athletics. Marching band and athletics. Marching band and athletics.
Any more discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bunk, divide the question, please.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Beistall. Mr. Carson. Mr. Fry.
Yes.
Mr. Polkowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Alt.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, one, and one absent.
In the next meeting or two, we get a plan, right, Charlie? How this is going to work? So, we have next in stone, before the athletic program starts this year.
Probably should have had that before we voted on it.
Well, you voted now, anyway, so don't have.
So, we're back to the budget.
Okay, back to the motion to accept the budget.
With the revision as to pay-to-play now in it.
Right.
Do we go by who made the motion before?
Yes.
And that was Mrs. Rhodes and Mr. Fry?
Right.
Okay.
And again, pay-to-play was already in there, what we had figured.
Okay, so, do we have to have discussion again, or can we get a roll call?
I can meet the discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Now's the time, the President is calling for discussion on the main motion, which is to approve the budget with the cuts as outlined by Dr. Olney. With the cuts as outlined by Dr. Moore.
Does that pay to play alter the revenue number that's in the motion? Or is that revenue number already included, pay to play?
That was not included as a revenue number, but it was taken off of, off of the expenditures.
Reduction of expenditures.
It's, the net effect is the same, but it would need to be moved to category A to category B.
Okay, so what's the total numbers here?
Looking at expenditures of thirty million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars. Revenues of thirty million, two hundred thousand, fourteen dollars and a fund balance usage of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Was that your question, Mr. Carson?
Yeah, yeah. Just looking down through this again. Hey Jim, what is it that we rent at twelve thousand dollars a year?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What is it that we rent, twelve thousand dollars a year?
What page are we looking?
I don't know.
I believe that's copiers, Mr. Carson.
Oh, that, that would be rental, leasing of copiers, postage machines.
I was thinking rental red, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
How much do we have to take out of the fund balance?
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one. Any more discussion?
Just update, people that are voting on the budget.
He just said we're going to update you guys that we're voting on the budget now.
All right, roll.
Roll call?
Mr. Carson?
No.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
No.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries six, two, no, one absent.
Continuing taxes for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year.
It is recommended that the board approve the continuation of all taxes heretofore levied by the School District of South Moreland in full force and effect, including those under Act 511, the Local Tax Enabling Act, 53 PS Statute 6901 et cetera. Earned income tax according to Act 511 at one-half of one percent. Emergency municipal services tax according to Act 511 of five dollars per person and real estate transfer tax according to Act 511 at one-half of one percent.
Motion?
No move.
Mr. Frye, second.
No move.
Mr. Beistall? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Establishment of real estate taxation for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year.
It is recommended that the board adopt the following real estate taxes in accordance with Section 627 of the School Code of 1949 as amended. One, a tax of seventy-seven point seven eight mils upon all real estate subject to taxation within Westmoreland County in the Southmoreland School District. The rate of taxation in dollars and cents on each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of taxable property is seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. A tax of fourteen point four five eight six mils upon all real estate subject to taxation within Fayette County in the Southmoreland School District. The rate of taxation in dollars and cents on each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of taxable property is one dollar and forty-five cents. The real estate taxes shall be due and payable as follows. Two percent discount when paid from August one to September twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen. Face value when paid from October one to November thirty, two thousand eighteen. Ten percent penalty when paid on December third, two thousand eighteen and thereafter.
Motion?
No move.
Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mrs. Smith? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
I need a motion to re-
No, Homestead and Farmstead.
Sorry, Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution.
Be resolved at the Southmore, by the Southmoreland Board of School Directors that Homestead and Farmstead exclusion real estate tax assessment reductions are authorized for the school year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, under the provisions of the Homestead Property Exclusion Program Act, part of Act 50 of 1998 and the Taxpayer Relief Act, Act One of 2006. Pursuant to the resolution which will be attached to the minutes, it is recommended that the board approve the amounts available for approved Homestead and approved Farmstead real estate tax reduction for the school year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Beistall, second.
No.
Mr. Frye? Discussion? Roll call please.
Do we need those numbers read, Mr. Petonik?
You have that?
It's attached to the agenda, yes.
To the agenda.
Gambling tax funds are available in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Philadelphia tax reimbursement funds are available in the amount of five hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents. Aggregate amount available is nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. That would include approved Homesteads within the school district of four thousand two hundred and seventy-two Homesteads. Three thousand five hundred twenty-eight of those are in Westmorely, Westmoreland County. Seven hundred and forty-four of them are in Fayette County. It also includes fifty-seven Farmsteads, forty-nine of which are in Westmoreland, eight of which are in Fayette. The maximum real estate calculation, the board has decided that the Homestead exclusion shall be equal. So dividing paragraph one aggregate numbers available between Homestead and Farmsteads, that means the maximum amount of applicable relief to each Homestead or Farmstead is two hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents. I'm done.
Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Motion to recess for personnel.
Seven.
Second?
No.
All in favor?
Hiring of Vicky Capone as the food service director at a starting salary of sixty thousand dollars.
Motion? Mr. Beistall? Mr. Polakowski seconds. Discussion?
Is that for a ten-month position?
It is a ten-month position.
Yes.
Please add that to the resolution and call that.
Shouldn't it come from the food budget and not our general budget?
I believe it comes from the food budget.
That does come from the food budget and not the general budget, just to let you guys know there. Take care of their own there. Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero, one absent.
Resignation of girls' assistant soccer coach.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Sterling Flunder as the girls' assistant soccer coach and authorize administration to post and advertise the position.
Motion?
No move.
Mr. Frye, second.
Sir.
Mr. Beistall?
No.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Retirement of SPC teacher.
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Janet Tabarmina.
Motion?
No move.
Tech? Mr. Beistall? All, our, roll call?
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Retirement of SPC teacher.
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Janet Tabarmina.
Motion?
No move.
Tech? Mr. Beistall? All, our, roll call?
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Citizens comments?
I think all of you know me, Brian Pritz, teacher, community member. You name it, I do it. I appreciate everything you do, but I do have some concerns. Middle school assistant coaches, I see they're all being cut salary only. Does that mean we're looking for volunteers? And if so, who can volunteer and be available by 2:00 PM when there's away games? On any given day or any given week, you're looking at an average of fifteen hours a week for a middle school sport. You're asking someone to volunteer and not be contractually bound to be there, which means the one coach that is there is by themselves. Now, a situation arose years ago when I was coaching middle school track and we had a girl get a jawbreaker stuck in her throat. And luckily, a parent, as I was coming across the track to get to her, a parent from Latrobe who was a nurse come down and issued the Heimlich maneuver. It never come up, but she could breathe. The nurse said she needs to go get x-rays to make sure it's not lodged further down. If there's one coach, who rides the ambulance because this girl's parents were not there? If there's one coach and that coach rides the ambulance, who rides the bus home? Because what if on that day the volunteer says, "Hey, I'm just not available today. I'm not available. I cannot be there." So last year, or in sixteen seventeen, we had two hundred twenty athletes in seventh and eighth grade. That's not different, that's, some kids played multiple sports, but there were two hundred twenty middle school children involved in athletics. We have class sizes of around one-fifty, so that's three hundred students. Some sports had sixty kids and we're going to ask one coach to manage sixty kids. The legality, the legal issues that could come up with this are, I don't even want to think about them because I don't want to put myself in a position to where it's he said, she said with students because I'm by myself. Furthermore, volunteers who are not contractually bound still have to take the coaching principles course and pay for it, which is a four to eight hour course, which they have to pass a hundred question test by eighty percent. Then they have to pass the sports first aid course, which again is another four to eight hour course, they must pay for it and pass a seventy-five question test. They have to pay to have their fingerprints done. I believe as volunteers, they can get their Act 34 and 151 clearances for free. They still have to go online and take the sudden cardiac arrest test and pass that certificate, which is about thirty minutes. Concussion certificate online, which is another thirty minutes. And then the child abuse certificate, which takes two to three hours. All to volunteer for roughly fifteen hours a week. Just this week alone, my assistants and I spent twenty-one and a half hours plus an additional four hours of travel time with our girls' basketball program. We're not contractually bound right now. Isn't that volunteering? We're volunteering as, as coaches in the off-season to go above and beyond what we already do during that contractual time. So I know that the budget is passed, but I'm asking you to think about this because you're going to end up putting people in a position to be by themselves with somewhere around, we had twenty-three, thirteen, twenty-five, seventeen, twenty kids on average with sixty out for track. So please, think about that as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Just back to this pay to play. It's not that I agree or disagree with it, but we just sat here after we discussed and watched you make an uneducated, uninformed vote on something that you didn't have all the information for. You said fifty dollars, twenty-five for the second kid. Roughly that brings in, I think you said eighteen thousand, but when you offer it free to people with reduced lunches or free lunches, that takes you down. We're going to fundraise. When I was in school, we had to know who, what, where, why, when. You can't make an informed decision until you know exactly where it's coming from. We also said, if it's not in a budget, we need to say where it's coming from before we pass it. We failed to do that again today. So by implementing this program without all the facts, we're going to be here again next year. And we already know we're going to be here again next year. You can't, you, you nickel and dime the budget, you've cut the small things, what's left to cut? You just approved something and you don't have all the information. That's not fair. We just started this whole ball over again. That's all I have.
I'd like to take this also, so you can hear me, but I'd encourage everyone here tonight to take Mrs. Rhodes' advice that she said last weekend, the meeting, and that is to lean on our local and state public officials. Both to encourage business development because we need a tax base, our tax base to expand. We need a thriving business district. We need a main street, one that attracts patrons and not pushes them away. Being a Rotarian, I asked a local politician a few years ago at one of our Rotary meetings where the casino money was going, and he had a very vague answer that he couldn't really answer. I lived in Indianapolis for ten years. Our property taxes were extremely low compared to what they are here. Had a three-bedroom ranch house on a corner lot in Marion County. It's about roughly twelve hundred dollars a year, and that included trash pickup. When I tried to figure out why they were so low in comparison, Indianapolis subsidized, Indiana subsidized the school tax with the state lottery. I shared this idea with Senator Pat Stefano, Representative Stefano. I think we all need to, we know that this game is, hopefully starts next school board meeting figuring out where we're going to go because obviously we didn't really solve a whole lot. Whether we want to consider to put a Band-Aid on or not, but we need to all start finding out who we need to contact in Harrisburg and even right here in our own East Huntington and Scottsdale areas and keep leaning on them to help make things better for our students and our teachers and our staff here. Thank you.
Any others? Motion to adjourn? No, I'm sorry.
I had a few words to say to Dr. Molnar. Dr. Molnar, since this is your last meeting, I wanted to say a few words publicly before your retirement is official. Over the years, your door was always open to discussion or to answer any questions I may have had, no matter how mundane they may have been. I always felt that you were honest and frank with your answers. And if you did not have the answer, you would research and get back to me in a timely fashion. We always had mutual respect for each other and a good working relationship, even when we didn't always agree on a matter. You're a man of integrity and have served this district with great fidelity. Because you have never been satisfied with being just good enough, the bar has always been set higher. In turn, this district under your leadership has risen above and beyond expectations. There is a reason why the word "super" is in the beginning of the title of superintendent. We have many great assets in this district, and you are definitely one of them. I am proud to have worked with you, and I am proud to call you my friend. So thank you for everything. Good luck and best wishes with the next chapter of your life.
Thank you very much.
If I may also, I would like to take a second from the administrative side to thank Dr. Molnar. I know, speaking from my experience as I came into the district, Dr. Molnar has made the administrative staff a part of the process. And I really appreciated the fact that we were afforded that opportunity to understand the working dynamics of this district and what we needed to do to better perform our jobs. I'm hoping that we take what you've given us as far as the experience and knowledge, and I'm hoping that we could continue to move this district forward and continue the legacy of what you've attempted to do here. So thank you very much on the part. And I'm sure I'm speaking, I'm hoping I'm speaking for my fellow administrators. Thank you for everything you've done for us as administrators, making us better leaders.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye?
My pleasure.
Thank you, it was mine.